Can I call the meeting to order? If everybody can please stand for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the executive section? We have a floor request. All right, excellent. Before we go into the first agenda item, I just want to go ahead and let everybody know that we have talked with Deana. She is feeling much better. They are keeping her one more night for observation, but the good thing is all her tests have been negative. She sits on well wishes and we are managing to coddle together. If the meeting falls apart, it is absolutely my fault because I didn't do it as well as she did. So, going on to our first agenda item, we will review and approve the minutes from the call meeting on December 30th of 2019. Counsel, if you would look over the notes.
Make a motion that we... Wait a minute. I had one thing to add.
Yes, sir.
I had made that contact with Tom.
Yes, sir.
Put the record on which you showed.
Okay.
I did that last time.
Yes, and that's your, you know, information.
I talked about Tom. Is this an inscription? No, it's not. To the added to the minutes. Yeah, I'd like to see that. Just as a matter of fact. Motion, we add these to the minutes in the previous session.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion to add Tom's comments. Who made the initial motion? Stan? Who seconded? So, all in favor of adding Tom's comments to the minutes as written? All in favor? unanimous. All right, so now Deana motion to approve the minutes with the addition of December 30th, 2019.
Show movement.
All right.
Second.
Tom had the first. Stan had the second. All in favor? unanimous. All right. Okay, so we also have the minutes for the executive session of December 30th, 2019. All right, so I have a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session.
Quick motion.
All right, I have the first. Second. Second. All in favor? Okay. Moving on to new business. Mr. Sears, I will let you pick it up from here.
All right. It was the Bay of Council. It's my honor to swear in the newly elected mayor and councilman for the town of Sharpsburg. At your December meeting, you accepted the vote totals that were given at that time. And so, I would ask Mayor Cole, if you'll... Stan? If you'll raise your right hand, I will solemnly swear affirm that I faithfully and truly perform the duties of mayor of this town, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the Town of Park, Sharpsburg, to the best of my skill and ability and as to be shall seem to the best interests and welfare of the town without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from public, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, so help me God. Congratulations, Mayor.
All right.
And at this time, I guess, Mr. Barton, if you would come forward. I guess I'm doing this not only with the way this was on the ballot by alphabetical order, but also by seniority since I think, listen, you've been on the council for how many years now?
I don't know.
You'll raise your right hand. I will solemnly swear affirm that I faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilmember of this town, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the Town of Sharpsburg, to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the town without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from public, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. Of course, Ms. Teague was recently elected and now will reelect to the council. If you'll raise your right hand, I will solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilmember of this town, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the Town of Sharpsburg, to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the town without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state or foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from public, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, so help me God.
I do.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sears, we appreciate it. It is much better to be sworn in than sworn out. We thank everybody who has helped us get to this point and thank you for your help going forward as well. Moving on to our new business. This is the kind of new business that we like to do. We have before you a resolution to amend our 2019 fiscal year budget. Basically, we are re-appropriating the amount of $23,311. If you flip two pages over to 2019 budget worksheet, look under right-hand side of the page, under the expense accounts, all the way down to the approved budget column, you'll see a section in green. That $23,311 is the amount that we pay in under budget in 2019, under our expenses. This is in line with the other projections that we have presented throughout this one year. Deana does a very good job of watching and managing the money and providing information to councilmen to make their decisions. So, we come to you being $23,000 under budget. So, we have to adjust our budget before the end of fiscal year to show what was accurately spent. And the approved budget and the payout budget is where we all were. We ended up spending out $187,690 for the $23,000 budget. I need a motion. All right, so I have a first one before.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. All right. From your budget table, go back one page in your packet. You will see that we have a second reading and resolution to adopt our 2020 budget. The actual resolution is right before the budget table. The 2020 budget to approve and the squashed budget are the remaining three pages. Our 2020 budget is going to be $210,012 in both revenues and expenses to comply with Georgia's balanced budget law. The third page of the budget numbers indicate that we still have $13,000 remaining on our squashed 2013-2019 budget on hand from the squashed 2019-2024 budget. We had $57,897,000 on hand. 2020 receivables are projected to be $57,000 as well. And the 2013 and 2019 combined squashed totals is $128,343. So, I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor to approve and adopt the reading and resolution of our 2020 budget? Unanimous. Thank you. The final bit of old business won't require a vote of council, but simply is a butt date. We've had some discussion over the last couple of months over the charges that our instructors paid for our community center classes. Council asked us to come back with a daily average combining our utilities to kind of determine the baseline cost for our instructors. The original thought was that the instructor fees had remained the same for so long that they had not kept up with our costs and expenses. The daily average is $14.60 per day for instructors to use and operate the community center. In talking with the instructors, if we came up to that daily rate, the charge of that amount, it would be harmful to three of the four instructors, which would lessen the services we provided to our citizens. So, what I think Deana and I are going to do is we are going to keep the riddle rates, air quotes, riddle rates, so to speak, the same, but we are going to have them track the number of attendings more consistently and correctly. We're going to have to pay on a more regular basis and then we'll just monitor the costs to see how it goes. I don't want to reduce the services to the citizens and if we have to pay a little bit more in gas and lights to keep those classes here as a draw to the community, then sometimes that's just the role of government. So, we provide the information that council wanted. We will not raise their rates, but we will do our record keeping a little bit better. And of course, that is, so as you guys know, so that we can go after other grants and funding in the future, we will have a record of how new people come through these doors because I'd love to see that number. I'll bet it to the thousands once we start adding it up to our numbers in our places here. So, there's no action on that. Do I have any questions from council on our new oral business items?
You're going to keep the, you're going to make sure that Carlos will get all the instructors that we kept, leave, but try to call.
Yes. Yes, sir. And then in, and on some of the smaller classes, we may not recover the full $14.60 per day, but we have enough income stuff that it balances out. It benefits the community.
Okay.
And it's not costing us as much money as we thought that it might be, which is, you know, a bit of oil. And too, it balances out. You know, you can see the months in here that we have a lot of cooling and then we have a lot of heating. May in January are the highest months for utility usage because that's the, one of the warmest, one of the coldest months. So, it all averages out. And like I said, it provides energy to the community and it's a point of pride, I think, for a lot of us.
And the ones who learned about the gradually.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. That being all of the whole business, we will turn to the public comment section. We do have a couple of, a couple of our other elected officials here. Senator Brass, if you would like to give us an update on your upcoming legislative session or any other thoughts that you have before you go into the golden rule.
Right here, okay?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Do you want to give my microphone? Yeah, so this coming up session is going to probably be a little bit different than last year. I think I came and gave an update after the session last year. We had some major, major issues that we dealt with last year. In fact, we voted on about eight or nine major pieces of legislation, which in a typical year, you might take on two or three. In fact, we took on eight or nine and we passed, I think, six of them. You know, it was a very, very busy year. And this coming up year, the main topic and what I feel like is going to dominate the session is really going to be around the budget. Right now, in the current budget cycle, we're about $220 million short. We do feel like that's going to be made up. That was the case the year prior. We went into the final quarter, we were about $120 million short and that was made up. And there's a number of reasons for that. I mean, yes, we did give an income tax cut at the state level and so that's part of it. But another part is going into, traditionally going into a presidential election year, a lot of your corporate dollars get withheld back because they want to see how the election goes or get a feel for how the election goes so they can kind of decide where they're going to invest their money. So, I think a lot of that money right now is being held back and that is costing some more shortfall in the budget. But again, I think as the, as the election starts to play out, I think that money will be made up at least in the last quarter. But to the governor's credit, he's being very proactive on it and has come in and said, "We're going to do 4% cuts on this year's budget and then look for 6% cuts on next year's budget." So, really just not looking to trim services, just looking to trim kind of the excess government that can be out there. And, you know, we, our budget has grown every year since the recession. So, I think it's, I appreciate the governor's leadership in coming in and saying, "Let's, let's really look at this and look to see where we can cut without losing services." So, that really is going to be the major issue that we face this coming up session. Another one that I think that we took on last year that really could affect Sharpsburg and this part of the county is your rural broadband. We did several things there. We did some things with, really it was GMA, our Georgia Municipal Association, and our broadband providers and our county government association. They all came together and came up with a kind of compromise on pole attachment fees, which was one of the things that was hindering broadband from expanding. Another thing that we did was we actually allowed our EMCs to now, they can go in and start laying, start laying cable in the ground, a broadband in the ground. And so, in the co-ops, they have to, they have this opt-in program. So, not everyone's going to do it, but right out of the gate, Carroll EMC right next door has jumped on that. They applied for a federal grant and their partnership has to be approved by USDA. And if approved, they receive the grant money and then they're going to get laid cable or laid broadband in Hurd County. So, if Hurd County can have broadband, then I know we can have that broadband here. There's one little piece that I feel like it really could help this area, especially when I think about driving from here down towards Sonoye along 16. You've got a lot of houses that are set back off the road and, you know, there's, there's broadband running right down 16. But the cost to tie in from the home to that cable or to that wire, I've heard is high as $33,000. And it's typically the average that I've, of calls I've been getting, the average is probably closer to about $16,000 to $18,000. And, you know, typical, your typical homeowner, he doesn't just have $16,000 to $20,000 laying around, or at least I know I don't. So, anyway, so what we got to do is we still got to figure out that final piece. The credit to the federal government, and I don't give them credit much, but I'm going to give them credit here, they are, they are trying to help with that as far as the financing goes. That grant money that Carroll EMC has applied for, some of that will go to help tie in and help with that. But there's, there's also some other things I think we can do from the state level, not necessarily with money, but just with some regulations. I actually had a bill last year, I pulled back on it, but it was going to allow you to tie it into your property taxes. You can finance it through your property taxes, but it's called pay financing, but then I found out that that takes priority, first priority on your, over your first mortgage and I didn't want to do that. So, we backed off and I sat down with the banks and told them, you know, "Why not figure out a way to do home equity loans for this?" I mean, because if someone could, if someone can finance it over the course, over the length of time that this service is going to be good, you know, 10, 15 years, they might be able to pay another $50 to maybe $75, whatever that may be. They may be willing to do that, especially if they have a home business, which a lot of people in this area do. And they need that, they need that internet. So, anyway, that's, that's the piece that we're still working on. But broadband is going to be, I think, going to be really at the forefront until we get it fixed, until, you know, I mean, you go back to the 20s or whenever it was and not everybody had power, you know, that's kind of where we're at with broadband. I mean, everybody needs it. It's how we communicate these days. It's how we, it's how I get the news. I don't even have cable anymore. I do it all through the internet. And so, that saves you about $100 a month. But yeah, so that's a big one. Mental health is always, you know, again, you know, years ago, they, the federal government really kind of cut funding on, on mental health because they wanted to get rid of, you know, people being institutionalized. And that's why you saw the state kind of shift away from the big, you know, the big facility at Millageville and others. There just, there's, it's just not, there's not enough of it. There's not enough of that service. Y'all may have read in the paper, a few years ago, we had a mental health facility wanting to come to Newman, they wanted to buy the old Piedmont Hospital, and we had state regulations that prevented that from happening. So, and that was certificate of need. I won't, I won't go into that, but I did have a bill that repealed certificate of need, but we, it didn't pass, but we got some major overhauls in certificate of need last year. Mental health, we did not. So, but I did learn some stuff and on the mental health was preventing it. And so, I've got a bill coming this year that's going to, that will allow these standalone mental health facilities, like the one that tried to buy the Piedmont building, they're actually not allowed to draw down Medicaid after four days because after four days is considered long-term care. And again, that's where they want to get rid of the institutionalized and that was why the funding was cut. So, what this will do, this bill will allow them to joint venture with a, with a rural hospital. It won't necessarily help us around here because we don't have any vacant beds, but in rural Georgia, there are many vacant beds. They can joint venture, the rural hospital can convert those beds to mental health beds. And because they're now connected to a hospital through that joint venture, they can start to draw down Medicaid. So, that's the idea behind it, rural. I'm sure there's going to be some unforeseen problems once we get going, but we'll work through that. And then just healthcare in general. I mean, we've got to have, you know, access and affordability. That's, that's got to be the, one of the number one things we talk about every single year is access and affordability. We're fortunate around here, we do have good access, but we're like the rest of America where the cost of healthcare has just gone through the roof. And so, we as a state, we've, we've got to continue to address that and do wherever we can. Last year, we took a big step with Medicaid waivers, assuming that it's get approved. You know, we're going to see a decent amount of our population that were either uninsured or underinsured come off the, really come off the books to where it was driving up the insurance on the residents or driving up the cost of the hospital to make up for the fact that they were having to pay for these people that didn't want to pay for them. So, if we're able to sort them out, to pull that population out, we're hoping, we're hoping to see it possible now. Another thing is foster care. Foster care has been, it's been important to me since I got elected. You know, I feel like, you know, when a child is taken from home, they essentially become the state's child legally, they do. And I feel like we've got to do a better job. the state's child legally, they do, and I feel like we've got to do better job of taking care of those children. I did have a bill last year, and it did pass, and one thing, one thing we were hearing from foster parents, that they were, they would get involved, they would foster a child, and, and the judge, when it came time to decide where that, where the child was going to go, a family member who may have never even met the child could show up, and they had more rights than a foster parent. So essentially what we did was, we just, it's still ultimately up to the judge, and that was, I didn't want to take, didn't want to take it out of the judge's hands, but we did want to give the foster parents more standing. So we strengthened three of the factors that the judge looks at when it turns less in the best interest for that child. And that bill did pass, and I'm very proud of that bill, and we're going to continue to, to address foster care and, and taking care of these kids that, you know, just aren't, aren't getting help anything, so. Those are kind of my issues, and, you know, as far as, as far as local government stuff comes, you know, there's, there are some bills out there that I know y'all probably don't like as a city council or as a town council, but, you know, I don't think there's much support for, for, for some of them, so I think you're going to be okay. Does anyone have any questions? Can I ask questions?
Sure.
Public comments, does anyone have any questions? No?
I've got my Christmas card.
It's not so much of a question as it is an observation. Now, anybody that's listened to us for a while knows trouble that can be ahead by the health insurance or a small group health insurance. That is the largest cost in government, is this personnel and health insurance cost. Anything that can be done to help drive that down helps the citizens that are out there. I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Wood, would you, would you have anything that you'd like to add or any updates for your department?
Well, I just want to, I want to be amiable for the swearing in, and I appreciate all of you for what you do here in the town of Sharpsburg. The sheriff's office, as you know, is your police department, so we are here for you. I know you've been working well with Major Penninger over the traffic issues you've been having. I know Councilman Park has been talking with him also, so I hope we get that squared away. I know you do have a speeding problem through town a lot of times, and so I hope our officers are working on that. I know they've written some pages on Tarrentine, so I hope we get that squared away. But as far as Sheriff's Office go, we are still in the transition stage, it's pretty going real good. It's been, the guys are really taking care of me good, and they, they keep me calm. That's a good thing. We have some good guys working in Sheriff's Office, and I know they are coming around. We're, we're doing more of the community things, we're getting out and talking with the community a lot more, and it's helping us a lot in everything we do. We're getting more calls, we're getting personal calls from the people. When they know that you have an officer that's assigned to your area, he's your officer, your deputy, and there's four different roles for Sharpsburg, so they will be available to you. So when you see him, if you get a chance, talk to him, get to know him, and we look forward, and working with you, come on.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that you deputies do. They are very responsive. The only limitation is they just can't be here all the time, and that's not, that's not their fault, that's not your fault, but they have been very responsive and very, and they've been good to our, good to our people, and, you know, you can't ask for much more than that for long.
They try.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Because I just, I don't have, have to be there that day, but one day I watch and there's three people. This is one day. When they have a chance, they try to do it. It's, it's, you've got to figure, the county is growing fourfold every day. We're getting more people moving in here, which is going to be a problem for the next several years. We, the county actually gave us five new positions this year. We've been doing very well with retention, so we're probably seven people short in patrol right now, which is real good for most agencies who are having trouble hiring. We're not having that problem, so it's been real good for us. You figure we have close to 300 employees at Sheriff's Office, and that's with the jail, in patrol, investigations, everything, so we've done real good. Douglas County, which is a similar size-wise county, is operating with about, well over 500 charities, so we're doing real good with what we have. Kelly County still has a lot of the small county feel to it, and we will be keeping that way, so we try to keep that. Ag guys, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I will start on this side of the audience for, for any additional public comments. So Mary Quinn?
I'm good, I just got here.
Ms. Hyde? Ms. Cole?
I would like to say thank you to Mrs. Morris, Mayor, and to our new county council. We appreciate your hard work, and we look forward to wonderful 2020.
Certainly will, thank you. Ms. Polly?
I just did.
Okay. Ms. Cole, Ms. Cole? Man back there?
Congratulations.
Oh, East Calweta, it's in one of the library.
It's nice to see you again.
Congratulations and keep up the good job.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate it. Calling the council, I will start now on the R end. Councilman Pardon?
We've got a good crowd here tonight, you know, sometimes we don't have maybe one or two filled up, and I don't know if it's either Wheezy or Saturday's paper, but it has a listing of all the meetings, council member, council meetings in the county. I wonder why ours is not in there.
I can't say that I have seen that list, but I will.
Seems like I do it every week, see the Wheezy or Saturday's paper. Has all representatives and they used to go and talk about it, but you see it. I just wondered, you know, people might not know it, and see it in the paper, it might come up.
Okay. Okay, I will, I will find out.
It used to, we had somebody in the paper come by and covering meetings, too.
Well, I think that they realize we're common and genial group of politicians in council. We haven't earned their attention. We've finished it. No, we can't. No, 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 no. Hi, Councilman Teagle.
He's speechless, that's.
Add on to what you said, I noticed that the town of Ture, like in Onwaterville, they have their announcements, whatever you mean, on their field.
In Onwaterville?
Yeah, and I know all our residents in Sharpsburg give their water, so could you ask them to add our work to that? That's another way.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a, about $20,000 on water. What?
What?
It was a mis-tie. But I notice it when I notice that, notice the meaning part.
I would notice that.
I'll hit the phone or a quick. Yeah, that's another way to be, like, something said.
Councilman Pardon?
So we're going to take down that sign right by our driveway, the speed limit sign, so that the sheriff's department can sit in our driveway.
So we mentioned earlier that the deputies are very good at talking with us and working with us, and one of the things they share to us is it's hard, they can't legally run radar on Tarrentine because there is a, a speed limit sign maybe 20 yards from where they're planning on sending, and that's what she's referencing. We will pull that sign up. Tarrentine is on the list of DMT registered roads, because I checked out early on, so you can legally run radar on it. So do we need to do anything with the deputies or the major? Just let them know that the sign is down and? I'll do it. Okay. Excellent. And just for the record, that speed limit sign that is up there is Mr. Woods.
Yes.
It is not the town sign, it was one that he dug up for a job site previously and put up there to, to tell people what was going on. Okay. No, he didn't. All right. Julie, do you have anything in place of the clerk's comments for tonight? Okay, so for the mayor's minutes, I want to thank everybody that has made this past year possible. We need to go into it that 2018, or I'm sorry, that 2019 would be a foundational year, and we have done a lot of good work of laying the foundation. Our budget is in great shape, our floss budget is in great shape, we have projects lined up. We are taking every little next step that we need to do that will lead to a big step. We look forward to continuing that. But now that we have started doing some of the work, now we need to ask you for some of the work. We need your input, we need your opinions, we need to know what you want us to do, because that is how we formulate work plans and comprehensive plans and can bring in the amenities and activities and things that, that we as a community want. A lot of times in a vacuum, it can be just one or five people making the decision. It doesn't have to be. It can be a group of 10, it can be a group of 20, it can be a group of 50, but we've got to make the decisions, we've got to lay the plans, and we've got to know where we are going forward, because if we're just kind of sitting here, we're not moving forward. So as we continue into 2020, we would please ask for your continued attendance and participation, and, and give us ideas, give us input, give us things to do, because we don't happen to have all the good ideas. A lot of good ideas are out there, so bring them to us and let us help, or help us put those into play. In that vein, we officially announced today, earlier today, that the Sierra Beach Playhouse will be presenting the Jungle Book on April 4th and 5th. They are an award-winning theater company, and will be coming here to Sharpsburg and performing in our musical complex out in the park in here. We will be serving refreshments in here, we're going to be doing, we're going to be supporting the high school. This is done in partnership with East Calweta On Stage, Echo Stage, their drama department. And it's not just for our town residents, it's for people that are in the greater metropolitan Sharpsburg area, and we want you to help talk about that and share that and present that information. I'm very honored to serve in this position. It, it, it's a lot of work, but I love it. I love my town, I love the people. Thank y'all for making it possible. And I'll ask one last time, do we have any comments or questions from the public? Any comments or questions from council or staff?
We appreciate the job you do, and I know the big salary you get, I think it boils down, you make a good one out of it.
Only a good day. Only a good day, that's probably one of the averages out today. But no, I appreciate it, it's, it's a laborer's job. It's really good. All right. That being said, and there being no proof of business before the council, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. All right, Mr. Pardon has the first, Mr. Teagle has the second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank y'all very much. We adjourn.